Okay, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're here for legislative oversight. LO 24-0060 briefing fiscal year 2025 preliminary revenue estimates. I'm Eric Costello, councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. Joined to my left, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District Member of the Committee, Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District Member of the Committee. Joined by staff from Mayor Brandon Scott, Council President Nick Mosby's office. We are going to start off with a presentation from BBMR. Ms. Larson, I will turn it over to you.
Good morning Chairman Costello, members of the committee.
Oh Laura, if you want to just stay at your seat.
Oh, that's wonderful, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Or you can also stand, I don't want to dictate, but the options are there for you.
Helps me with my wellness stats. Good morning Chairman Costello, members of the committee. Thank you so much for the opportunity to meet with you today to talk through our general fund forecast for fiscal year 25. Just as a reminder, the mayor introduced his preliminary budget recommendations yesterday. And those, we will be at the Board of Estimates tomorrow morning to formally transmit the preliminary budget recommendations to the BOE for their consideration. What we're going to do today is we're going to walk you through all of the major revenue sources that make up our general fund revenue and talk a little bit about what we're forecasting and some of the assumptions that we have reflected in these numbers. Before we dive into the content, I do just want to note that the preliminary budget does not reflect any sort of adjustments in the wake of the Francis Scott Key Bridge collapse. Most of, much of the work regarding the preliminary budget had been completed when the bridge collapse happened a week ago. And so, any changes that would, that we would need to reflect to the budget are sort of in flux at this point in time because we know that information is rapidly changing regarding the response and recovery. So if there is any sort of change that we know about that would impact either revenues or expenditures before the BOE finishes their work with the budget, there may be adjustments that get reflected in the BOE recommendations. If, and then if we learn of any sort of significant change after that, it would likely end up being reflected in the fiscal '25 budget via an amendment that would, would pass after budget adoption. But what I can tell you, you all as members of the committee is that my team and I are very, very closely monitoring the overall economic impacts and what that might do for our revenue streams so that we can share that information with you and your colleagues. And we are also working with all of our colleagues throughout city government to track city costs associated both with, with the current response efforts, but then ongoing with any new programs that may have to be stood up. So, so did just want to take a couple of minutes just to acknowledge how, how the, the bridge collapses is factored into this year's budget. So with that, let's go ahead and dive in here. And before we, before we dive into the content, do just want to acknowledge that I'm joined by our Assistant Budget Director for Revenue and Long Term, Long Range Planning Pedro Aponte, who will also help me answer any of the questions that you may have regarding these numbers. So, starting off, the, the preliminary budget for the city's general fund is $2.3 billion. That's about 5% higher than the fiscal '24 adopted budget. When we look at the general fund revenues by the, the major sources of revenue, property taxes continue to represent about half of our general fund revenue, just under 50%, followed by the next largest share is income tax and then state highway user revenue. The distribution of these major revenue sources for the city's general fund are unchanged from the fiscal '24 budget. So, starting off with property tax. So our property tax projection is up by $65.4 million or, or 6.7%. So in total, we are projecting just over a billion dollars in parking, in property tax revenue in fiscal year 25. Now, the, the strength on the, the property tax side is, is driven by the continued strength in terms of the city's property assessments. So the fiscal '25 budget reflects the reassessments of Group 3. Group 3 represents the, essentially the southern portion of the city. This is the, the, the final group that needed to be reassessed post the real estate boom that we saw when interest rates were very low coming out of COVID. And so that's really contributed to the strong increase that we saw here. So those Group 3 assessments are, are up by 17.9%. That's the second highest increase that we have seen in the last 10 years, only, second only to last year's increase. It is also important to note that this is the 11th consecutive year of increases in terms of assessments for the city. But we, one of the things that we do just want to note, while these numbers are, are strong and continue a, a strong trend for the city, we are continuing to lag behind other jurisdictions in the state. We were last among the other counties when we look at assessment growth in fiscal '25. The preliminary budget maintains the same effective property tax rate. So the effective rate is still the $2.24, 24 cents, but the effective rate for our owner occupied residents is still, is at the $2.2048. Again, that continued, that's a 20 cent difference and that continues the 20 cent reduction by 2020 that was put in, to place a number of years ago. Next up is property tax, or is tax credits. So again, tax credits in the budget are reflected as a cost of, of offering these programs. The cost of administering our tax credit programs is actually going down in fiscal '25. It's going down by $2.5 million or 2.5%. That decrease is really a result of two of our credit, of change in activities with two of our credits, the Enterprise Zone Tax Credit and the, and the CHAP Tax Credit. This is primarily due to credits expiring on a handful of projects. This, the recommended budget for tax credits does not anticipate any tax credit reform that has been talked about. There is a work group that is convened to look at the city's tax credits and to discuss any potential reforms to the city's tax credits. But again, that work is ongoing and the budget doesn't reflect any changes to existing programs. Next up for transfer and recordation taxes, this revenue stream is down by $4.8 million or 4.9%. This really reflects the changes in the real estate market. And what we're seeing here is essentially a normalization of this revenue stream. So this is an area where the city's budget really benefited during the, the real estate boom in fiscal '21 and fiscal '22. You can see that we had sort of an abnormally high year in fiscal '22 and now we're normalizing back into the, our more normal levels where we're just under $100 million for these revenue streams. One thing that we, that we are monitoring when it comes to this revenue stream is both real estate activity in terms of number of units sold, but is, but also the value of those, of those properties that are being sold. And what we're seeing on the residential side is that there's about a 25% decrease year over year in the number of units that are being sold. But the good news is that the units that are being sold are continuing to maintain their higher values that, that we saw as, as real, overall real estate values went up. Their, real estate values in general on the residential side are up by about, just under 1%. So again, that's good news that while we're seeing, you know, slower activity, we are seeing that the value is, is being held. What we would expect to see for transfer and recordation tax, if interest rates do continue to decline, like the Federal Reserve is starting to signal, we might start to see some additional activity here as people begin to refinance to try to get lower interest rates on their mortgages. But again, that's something that we'll closely monitor and that will be closely linked to what's happening with interest rates nationally. Next up is income tax. So, income tax is projected to increase by $18.9 million or 4.2%. This reflects sort of the continued strength in the city's labor market. In, in calendar year 2023, the city's unemployment rate reached 2.9%. That was the lowest rate that we had seen since 1990 and that was actually below the national average. So that is, is great news for our local, our, our local employment market. When we look at the distribution of income tax filers in the city, what we're seeing is that there, in 2022, there was a net increase and most of the increase was in those middle income brackets from 30,000 to 500,000. We continue to see that we're losing filers making less than 30,000 and we also saw a small decrease in filers making more than 500,000. Now, one thing to know about this data is that our income tax projections for fiscal '25 are based off of tax, tax returns that are filed for calendar year 2022. So there is a lag in, in terms of what's happening in the real time market and what we see for income tax. One of the reasons why we're seeing the increase, one of the reasons why we speculate that we're seeing the net increase here is that 2022 is really that first year post-COVID when people were returning to the labor market. So even though as a city we were seeing population loss, it did make sense that people were coming back into the labor market post-COVID. Next up is highway user revenue. So these, this revenue is projected to be up by 41.3 million or just over 21%. Fiscal '25 is the second year of the five-year step up that the city was projected to receive higher HUR allocations through the state funding formula. Now this is something that has been in flux with the state budget as it is moving its way through its process down in Annapolis. We do know that the governor's original budget had reduced this increase for the city. It was later restored and now there are different bills pending the, the Senate and the House that would impact the out year, the final years of that five-year increase. But based off of where the legislation stands today, the '25 increase would be in place for the city. So even if there are changes regarding HUR impacting those out years, we, we do believe that the '25 numbers will remain unchanged. This higher HUR funding is, is really important to the city because nearly all of the additional funding is going into our transportation capital program. And so with this additional $41 million, we're really able to enhance what we're able to fund in terms of transportation-related capital. And loss of those dollars moving forward would really impact our ability to make investments in those transportation capital projects. Next up is investment earnings. So this revenue source is projected to increase by $15.6 million or just under 60%. Now, a portion of this increase, we believe, is, is temporary and that is because the city continues to have a higher cash on hand balance due to the ARPA award. So again, we, the city receives $641 million through ARPA. Under the parameters of that program, we're able to invest that cash as part of the city's short-term investment policy. And so we continue to receive higher returns because we have more cash in the market. As we move through fiscal '25, we know that the, the spend down of those dollars is really going to ramp up. And so we, we, we do think that this will normalize again as we, as, as those dollars go out the door. But as, you know, as interest rates remain higher based off of the action from the Federal Reserve, we are, the city is seeing a higher yield than what we were seeing when interest rates were essentially at zero. We're currently receiving about a 4.5% return on these short-term investments. Next up is tourism and visitor-related revenue. So this is largely our hotel tax and parking revenues. So these two sources are projected to be up by $5.1 million or just over 10%. So on the hotel tax side, what's really helping us out here is that the average, the nightly room rate for hotel rooms continues to, to increase. So the nightly room rates are up to about 4% year over year and continued, anticipated to continue to, to increase. On the parking side, we're projecting that parking revenues will be up by about $6.2 million. Now this includes some recommendations that are part of the mayor's overall preliminary spending plan that includes some reforms around parking enforcement, namely the use of license plate reader technology to step up enforcement of the residential parking program, turning on parking penalties that have been off since COVID-19, and then also bringing forward new legislation regarding the parking tax that would expand the parking tax to parking brokers that are, are selling parking spots through various marketplaces. And then finally, traffic cameras. This revenue stream is projected to be up by about $800,000 or 3.2%. This, this projection continues to assume that we, the collection rate for these citations is about 55%. This also takes into account that DOT will be deploying new cameras in fiscal '25. There's going to be, in total, after they deploy the 24 new cameras, we'll have 153 speed cameras and 183 red light cameras citywide. Now this again is, this does not include the I-83 network of cameras. Just as a reminder, revenue from the I-83 cameras is restricted to the cost of administering the I-83 traffic program or, as well as putting, funding back into improvements for the I-83 corridor. Based off of our revenue that we're projecting for I-83 next year, the, the camera revenue is just projected to cover the operating costs. There's not projected to be sufficient revenue to allow for any investment in capital program, in capital projects. So we'll, we'll open it up for questions here in a second. But before we do that, I just want to share just a couple of key dates as we look out to the future for the fiscal '25 budget. So yesterday, the preliminary budget was released. As I mentioned, it will be formally introduced at the Board of Estimates tomorrow morning. On April 17th, the Board of Estimates will hold a special hearing with all agencies where we will provide an overview hearing regarding the recommended budget. That evening, we will hold the Board of Estimates Taxpayer Night. On May the 1st, the Board of Estimates will vote on the fiscal '25 ordinance of estimates and then the ordinance of estimates will be introduced at the council on Monday, May the 6th. On May 16th, my team and I will provide an overview of the BOE recommended numbers for city council and then the city council taxpayers' night will take place that evening. And then the council hearings are slated to take place from May 23rd through June 6th. And again, the, the ordinance of estimates must be adopted no later than June 26th. So with that, I will just back up here and then open it up to questions regarding any of the specific revenue sources that we walked through.
Thank you. We've been joined by Councilman Mark Conway, 4th District. I got Councilman Stokes and then Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. I just, I know we have probably the highest property tax we know in the state of Maryland. Have your office or maybe the administration talked to any outside organization to talk about how we can lower some of the property tax in the city? And we can get some of these vacant houses and get them on a tax roll? I know there's been an issue, but, and even if it's an outside organization, outside of Baltimore, outside of Maryland, have you had a discussion about how we lower the property tax in Baltimore City? I know we don't have the population, but still, the bottom line is the highest in the state of Maryland.
For sure. So, property tax relief is, is definitely a priority of the Scott administration as we've been doing work on the 10-year financial plan. That's one of the cornerstones of the plan is to look at ways that we can further relieve on the property tax side, especially for those owner occupied units. And some of those initiatives, essentially what we need to be able to do is to look for a way to pay for additional relief. And so that may, that will either require another revenue source to replace, to pay for the, the property tax relief or looking for additional savings that we could realize through general fund expenditures. But there are a couple of initiatives that are, you know, that we could look at that would bring us in line with our partners. One of the, you know, common things that we talk about is how solid waste services are funded. So the city's property tax rate includes the cost of providing solid waste services. There are another, a number of other jurisdictions in the state of Maryland where those are a separate fee that are paid outside of the property tax. That alone, if we were to, you know, take solid waste out of the general fund, that would be a savings in the general fund of about 80 to 90 million dollars that then could flow through to property tax relief.
So just a follow-up, Mr. Chair. So if that happens, that means you had layoffs in solid waste?
No, you wouldn't. So essentially that takes solid waste services from being part of your property tax bill to being something that you pay for as an enterprise service. So it would be more, that would be something that would be more akin to like, how you pay for your water bill on a, on a monthly or quarterly basis. Again, that's just one, one example where the city is a little bit of an outlier with some of the other jurisdictions when, when we do just a, a straight comparison of the rates. And again, that's, that's one idea among many that are sort of on the table as we look for different ways that we could pay for property tax relief.
Thank you.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Ms., Mr. Chair. I know that, and you know, we've been dealing with the, the port tragedy and I know that you have been preparing way before this tragedy happened. Do you see any potential downsides to, to the city? You know, I know the state is involved as well. Can you, I, I know there's probably been discussions. Could you share some of that?
Certainly. And as I was mentioning, we are working with partners to really understand how the economic impacts of the port, the temporary port closure will impact the city. You know, the, in terms of direct revenue sources from the port to the city, the port pays a pilot, so a payment in lieu of taxes. That's about $1.9 million annually in terms of our general fund revenue. But on a, on a broader perspective, you know, we anticipate that there could be impacts to our income tax revenue if there are, if there are any layoffs associated with the port having to be closed. Again, the, the impact of that to the city's general fund would be a couple of years lagged just because of, just because of how income tax looks backwards in terms of how those dollars get allocated from the state. I do anticipate that this is really going to be something that's going to impact us regionally and so we are going to have to work really closely with our colleagues in Baltimore County and at the state to really understand how different revenue sources that are either directly to the state and then flow through to local aid, how those things might be impacted. So again, it's still very early, but it is something that we are working closely with partners to really understand how we're, how we'll monitor and be able to report back in terms of how that is impacting the city's budget.
Is it incidents like this that we tap into our rainy day fund?
Perhaps. So that is, you know, those conversations are ongoing. And, you know, as I mentioned, following the events of last week, we stood up protocols to begin cost tracking citywide so that we have accurate records of, of how much is being spent on the response and recovery efforts. And depending upon those, those costs and, you know, different programs that have to be stood up to, to help individuals and families that are impacted, we may, if we, if we don't have other funding sources, we may have to tap into the rainy day fund in order to cover those. If we do have to tap into the rainy day fund, we have to replenish it within a five-year window. And so, again, I think that there's different options that we'd be able to do that in a way that makes sense. And again, you know, tragedies like this are why we have the rainy day fund. And so if we do, if it does come to that, you know, the city is, is well positioned to be able to take on those costs and then react to them ongoing. I will say, you know, the issue is ever evolving in terms of how state and federal aid may play into this. So that's why we're really leaning into having accurate records regarding how we're tracking costs so that when we do have more information about those other sources of aid, you know, we will have, will be very well positioned to, to take advantage of those programs.
Thank you. And my last question, with the tourism, I guess, and visitor revenue, our Hilton Hotel, are there any specifics that you, that are important to share with us about that hotel specifically?
So with regards to the agreement with the Hilton Hotel, one of the, the things that happened during COVID is, is part of the agreement for the hotel, if revenues dip below a certain level, the city is obligated to contribute up to a max of $7 million to help fund the debt service for the hotel. What I can say is that in the preliminary budget, the, the revenue forecast, we've, we've had to contribute up to that maximum amount during COVID. It looks like in fiscal '25, we won't have to go up to that maximum amount. So that is good news. But again, we continue to work closely with our partners at, at BDC and at the hotel to really understand sort of what the city's obligation is there and how we sort of minimize the risk exposure to taxpayers to cover those costs.
And related to that, is there a specific number you have for the, the money, I guess, that the city gained with having the CIAA come to us?
Yes, there, the organizers of that event do publish an economic impact and our, our partners at Visit Baltimore share those numbers. I have not seen those numbers from this year's event, but that is something that we can follow up with our colleagues and, and circulate that back to the committee.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Laura, have we, um, do we have a projection on the inclusionary housing subsidy for the coming year?
So the tax credit projection does not include a cost for inclusionary in fiscal '25. The thinking on that is that some of those projects will take a while to get up and up online. And so we will really start to see the cost implications of that new tax credit looking out into the, into the future years, starting in '26, '27.
Okay. Do we have an account so far of the projects that are in the works now that are going to contribute to that in future years?
We do have, we, based off of the projects in the pipeline, we did have estimates of what we believe that the cost of that credit would be in the future years. I don't have those numbers directly in front of me, but we, I can definitely circle back with the committee to provide that full analysis and then to also indicate when we anticipate those costs to start kicking in in the budget.
Yeah, I would like to know about that. I would also specifically like to know any analysis you've done or any projections you're doing for the projected 900 or planned 900 dwellings at Harbor Place that are, you know, I think by the developer's statement, going to be like the most expensive housing in the city and therefore going to have the largest imaginable rent gap that we need to make up. It's going to be massive. I want to know about that as best we can as soon as possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Certainly. Certainly.
So Councilman, is there like a threshold on what that gap should be between the cost of the units and what the subsidy is that you deem appropriate?
I don't think I understand the question.
Well, the concern that you just raised is around what the gap is going to be and what the city is going to be on the hook for.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's a cost of the unit, and then there's an amount that the renters afford, can afford to pay under AMI.
Yeah.
And there's a gap that the city needs to cover. What I'm asking is, is there an acceptable threshold for you, because you've raised the concern before?
I, I don't understand, acceptable threshold of what?
All right, let me take it from the top.
I just don't understand that phrase.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I apologize. I probably didn't ask the question appropriately. Under the new inclusionary housing law, a subsidy is provided to the property owner to cover the gap between what a tenant can pay under AMI and the actual cost of the unit, correct?
Yes.
And you have raised a concern related to the Harbor Place project as that gap being unpalatable. Forgive me for summarizing what I believe to be your concern, among other things.
Yes.
And what I'm asking you, is there a threshold for what that gap should be for which you find palatable?
I just, I-
So we're not, we're not talking about something tangible because you're, you're referencing a, a project in my district and saying, and I'm, I'm just speaking in the context of the question you just asked today, you're saying that you're concerned because of this project, and I'm just curious if there's, if there's something tangible related to this project that is the concern in the context of your question, and I'm not sure I understand. So that's what I was asking clarification on.
Yeah, I mean, God, look, with respect to the, you're encapsulating it as a project in your district, it was very widely publicized as a project that is in Baltimore's living room, Baltimore's front yard. It's a project in a city park. It's entirely unique in all respects, with respect to everything in the city, including that the developer is out there very clearly saying this is going to be very expensive housing. And I have no idea how different that's going to be from any other project in the city, but when it is emphatically characterized as being very expensive housing, and I have to consider, you know, the number of dwelling units that are built at market rate today that are going for 1,500, where the rent gap is going to be $300 for that subsidy to make it 50% AMI versus the number of units that might go into this project and not many other projects where the rent might be 3,000 or 3,500 or $4,000 a month, and the rent gap is not $300. The rent gap is $3,000 per unit. That's extremely different from all other projects in the city and uniquely worth being attuned to, especially since it's a project that we know specifically is in the pipeline in the works. That's why I'm asking about it.
Okay. Yeah, because there are no numbers that have been released related to the project in terms of, you know, the, the specific cost of the units that have been proposed. That's the first thing. So I just want to make sure that like, trying to understand if the concern is related to something tangible, and I think it's, it's related to talking points that, that may have been heard. I've been engaged on this project for literally thousands of hours over the last, I don't know, nine months, and I have yet to hear the development team say these units are going to be very, very expensive, and I'm using the, the words that you just shared. So that's why I was, I was curious, but I appreciate the explanation.
Yeah, they, they use those words specifically in presenting the project in my district.
Okay. Well, I, I hope that we're gonna, that we plan to follow through on the precedent that has been set here with respect to this project and heavily scrutinize every single development project in the city. And I'm glad that we've been joined by Councilwoman Ramos from the 14th District, who is the lead sponsor of this legislation, so that hopefully we can come, come to some type of agreement on what's the appropriate gap in terms of what the city should be covering to follow through on its commitment to covering the subsidy to make this, this law work. Thank you. Councilman Conway? Councilwoman Ramos? And Councilwoman, that was nothing short of a compliment, and I wasn't asking to put anything else on your plate.
Oh, no. I was in the middle of the conversation, so I can feel fine.
Frankly, it had nothing to do with you. You just walked in at an opportune time to reference your name.
I was in another meeting, I apologize. I, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions quite yet because I'm, I'm just catching up, so thank you.
We'll cycle back through. Councilman Stokes? Council Vice President Middleton?
I'll come back to you in a second. Oh, all right, Councilman Stokes, then Middleton, then Dorsey.
This for the budget. Again, I know you talked about, I was talking about lowering the property taxes, we the highest in the state of Maryland. I know you mentioned about taking the, removing the sanitation department, something, could you explain that? Moving it out some parts of the budget, and that would lower the property tax. My, my question would be, are y'all going to do that or you just hit a conversation?
No. So just want to clarify, that is just one area where what's included in our property tax is an outlier compared to some of the other jurisdictions that we get compared against when, when people are providing that stat. So that would be one example of a way, of a reform that we could put in place and, and take those general fund savings to invest in property tax relief. There is, you know, me sharing that example is, is no way a reflection of, of that proposal being endorsed by the administration. What I can say is that property tax relief is part of the overall 10-year plan framework where we are looking at a whole host of initiatives that could be implemented to take those savings or new revenue and invest it back into property tax relief.
So if you do that, that does not require any layoffs, am I correct?
No, no, it would, there would be no layoffs. Essentially, we would change the way we, we fund the service, but the, the position, you know, the operations would not be impacted at all.
So that's what we're getting at, you said if it happens, then people, Baltimore City residents had to pay for their own trash pickup.
That, that would be, that's, that's one, that's one initiative of, of a whole host of other initiatives that could be explored in order to look at property tax relief. But yes, essentially what that would, would do is that you would pay for that service in the same way that you pay for like your water service.
So other jurisdictions actually do that, am I correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So have you looked at, or do you know numbers on how much the residents of Baltimore City would pay if that, if you move forward on that initiative?
Um, we, we have looked at that. Again, I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but that analysis has been performed, and I could, I could share details on what that would look like.
Mr. Chair, it's just a request. Could we, the committee get those numbers when compared to what other jurisdictions they're doing when they break it out, and how much those residents outside of Baltimore City are paying for their trash pickup?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Council Vice President?
I found the question. Getting back to the traffic cameras, the deployment strategy, and you had mentioned that I-83 was not included, and I know, I remember this, that's primarily also the 41st District area, and I know the state, a state delegate had put in a bill, maybe the last session, that some of that money gets dispersed to communities with help in, around, you know, those surrounding communities that basically feed from that, from I-83. But you said that's not included in this, could, could you just kind of explain that?
Yes, so what we are presenting here in these materials is the revenue from the traffic camera program that, that goes into the general fund. And so in total, that program in fiscal '25 is projected to bring in about $26.7 million to the city's general fund. That's up about $844,000 compared to fiscal '25. Now, again, that is inclusive of red light cameras, speed cameras, and the commercial truck enforcement. The revenue from the I-83 program that is outside of the general fund, it's in a special fund, and any revenue that's generated from I-83, from the I-83 traffic cameras goes back into the cost of administering the speed camera program, and then any incremental costs that, or any incremental revenue that we have left after those costs are covered can go back into capital investment for, in the I-83 corridor. What we have experienced since those cameras have been on is that the, the citation activity is lower than what was initially projected, and so currently the citation revenue is just covering the operating costs associated with the program. There's not any additional revenue that's being realized in order to go back into the capital program.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
Dorsey?
I'm good, thank you.
Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple of questions, just one, one clarifying, just to give some perspective. I showed up a little bit late to the meeting. I was just curious for the all other revenue, the 13.2%, what are some of the things that are included in there, just so I can sort of wrap my head around?
So, and I'll defer to Pedro to, to give any clarification, but this would represent, you know, the city has hundreds of smaller fi, or smaller fees, smaller, different revenue streams that come in. This would be things from like lien sheets to like fees paid to the BMZA, like during development review, and they really range in terms of size of revenue. In some cases, it's, you know, tens of thousands, in some cases, it's in the hundreds of thousand, like under a million dollars. And so we lump all of those smaller fees into this all other category. In our executive summary documents that are published after the Board of Estimates recommends the budget, we publish all of that detail, so you can see every single general fund revenue source and what's projected.
And, and a lot of that questioning, how, how often do we sort of look back at those to make sure that we, those fees make sense?
Mm-hmm.
You know, that they help us cover the cost of operations or just even the paper shuffling? Sometimes those fees are like menial and almost more expensive to collect the feed into-
Yeah. So the, the mayor's preliminary budget includes an assumption for $1 million of additional revenue that would be realized through reviewing fines and fees and then bringing through recommend, bringing forward a package of recommendations where some of those fines and fees need to be updated, because the intent with a lot of those is that they sort of grow in line with the cost of providing the service. And so in these recent years where we've seen higher inflation, we know that we've gotten behind on some of these. And so it's always our goal to sort of proactively look at those. I would say we, we probably are a little bit behind on that effort, but it is an intentional initiative that's part of the fiscal '25 package.
Okay, appreciate it. The other question I have is, is around the investment earnings?
Yes.
And the surplus that we've been seeing as a result of the ARPA funding, which is great.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just curious how long we expect to see that continue? I know we have to obligate the funds by the end of this year, but we still will technically hold that, that funding for a little longer. How long can we expect this sort of bubble to exist on our books?
I think we will see it to, we should see the cash on hands start to drop significantly as we move into fiscal '25. So, you know, we anticipate that a portion of this increase that we're seeing for fiscal '25 should be sort of temporary, and that we would see things sort of start to normalize in fiscal '26.
And we will carry cash from ARPA until '26?
It would be into its calendar, December 31st of calendar year 2026, so that will expire during fiscal year 2027, midway through.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Apologies if this has already been asked, apologies for my being late. Similar to my colleagues from the fourth question around the all other, is this, you know, once we see the breakdown, are, are, I would imagine it's also, you know, fees from, you know, parking violations and code enforcement and all of that, right, comes into that? So are we predicting that the agencies will be ramping up their enforcement to have this revenues, or is it based on past performance?
So parking revenues are not part of that all other category?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's under here, it's under hotel, I'm parking.
Yeah, they would fall, they're, we characterize those with the hotel, but code enforcement would be part of that, and, and like liquor license fines and fees are also in that category as well.
Well, the liquor license fees could expand exponentially because the law was changed.
Exactly, and so as part of the, you know, the recommendation that's reflected in the preliminary budget, we're look, we're going through and looking at a number of these fines and fees and looking at where we can make increases, again, we will have to come back, that all has to be legislated, and so we'll come back post-budget adoption with our specific recommendations about what fines and fees should be increased based off of the cost of providing those services or changes at the state level that would allow us to do things differently with one of our, with one of our revenue streams.
So you're saying that in this all other presented category, that the assumption around the increased, just using Liquor Board as an example, fines that they're going to be able to levy is not included here? You're, you're making the assumptions based on past performance and not future performance?
No, for, for that specific example, for the liquor fees, it's, it's part, it's where reflected that we, the '25 recommendations reflect that we would receive a partial year of increased revenue based off of the state action.
Okay, okay. Well, I look forward to seeing what the predictions are moving forward, because the, the law was changed where the Liquor Board could assess fines up to $20,000. Like, that's pretty significant.
Certainly.
You know, it's not just 500, it's pretty significant. But I also know in terms of our increased code enforcement that we're doing, some of it's not going to be paid, we understand, because there's a whole purpose for our increased code enforcement, but when it does get paid, you know, I'm just curious as to how that, you know, would work out.
Yeah, and for all of these revenue streams, you know, we, we take into account past performance, but as, we also take into account policy or initiative changes that would impact revenue in the upcoming year.
And my second question, again, forgive me if this was already asked, and I can ask it offline, but your, the income tax assumptions?
Mm-hmm.
That there are less, you know, fewer families that are earning $30,000 or less? This may, again, have to be referred to somebody else, but I was curious as to, does that mean that people are earning more? Does that mean that there are fewer people actually filing returns because they're earning so low that they don't need to file returns? What, what is that?
So this is data that we received from the state comptroller's office.
Okay, okay.
And so we don't, to, to really get at the root of what is driving the decrease in that bracket, we, you know, we're not seeing that level of detail. This is a data set that we've talked with our partners in the state comptroller's office to, to really understand, because these are trends that we also reported on last year in the, when we were talking about the fiscal '24 budget. To answer your question, you know, at this point, it would be speculation, but I, I would venture a guess that sort of all of the above of what you just mentioned is happening.
But I, I can ask the state comptroller's office about this, just to, from my knowledge- But I can ask the State Comptroller's Office about this, just to, from my knowledge.
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I just want to go back to the property tax. That's something that's hot and people in the city have been talking about. You talked about some of the scenarios. Can you also, this is just a request. You said you had some additional scenarios where you, y'all looked at in terms of lowering prop tax. For that request, you said one of them was about DPW and residents paying for their own trash pick. Can you make sure you include the other scenarios that you said you had also, also in the requests?
So certainly, I just, again, want to stress, that's just an example.
Right.
And, and so it's not a specific policy proposal that's on the table. It's, it's a, a cost that's reflected in our general fund that is not reflected in the general fund of other jurisdictions that we get compared against when that stat is referenced. So again, I just want to be crystal clear that there is, there's no work that's currently happening to put that idea into place.
No, I know there's enough work, but you said y'all had talked about some scenarios, just looking at it, like what's happening outside of Baltimore City, where the residents pay for their own trash pickup. Say, if there are additional scenarios you looked at, that's a request.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, for this committee.
Okay. And what I can say is that as part of the broader work that's, that's ongoing regarding updating the city's 10-year financial plan, which has a longer runway in terms of completing the update to that plan, it, it, there's an, we're looking at an entire package that would achieve a variety of goals. One of them would be property tax relief. And so, you know, I, I can provide an update regarding that plan, but again, there are not, there's not a specific list of, of initiatives that are, are formally in place that would be focused on property tax relief. Again, we're sort of in the early phases of looking at how we would accomplish that goal.
So this is just the information that I'm requesting. Okay.
Yep.
Um, Mr. Chair, I think is Council Vice President.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank you for having representation just about at every hearing that we have. And I know that, you know, your office takes note at, you know, some of the needs. And there's a reason that you have that participation and it leads up to, you know, what you're presenting to us today. Um, I, and I, well, one thing that kind of sticks out with me is that we all know that there's agencies that have shortages, agencies like housing, DPW, and transportation. And there's a process in trying to regrow that workforce. And you know that this council has always been trying to push apprenticeships, pre-apprenticeships with organizations outside and building that partnership. Is there a space where you try to make sure that those things are honored as you make decisions on cutting, you know, jobs, city jobs and so on and so forth? Thank you.
What I can say is that in, in close coordination with the city administrator, when budget decisions are being made, we, we take into account both past commitments that were made in the, the prior budget cycle to council, as well as emerging needs that have, have risen through different hearings or different policy considerations that have been put on the table. And so, you know, I, what I can share is that CA Leach, in her decision-making and her, the process that she puts in place to make recommendations to the mayor, you know, she takes the council perspective and priorities very seriously and is very diligent in terms of making sure that we are following up on commitments that are made in the prior budget cycle. So as, as we put together our, the, the recommendations for the fiscal 25 budget, where we'll talk more on the expenditure side in the coming weeks and months, what I can say is that we've, we've tried to take that into account wherever possible and, and try to take some of those, figure out how we come at some of those challenges so that we can make some meaningful progress. What we tried to do this year when looking at vacant positions was really try to identify roles that are just no longer needed in the agency that have, you know, where the agency has adapted other processes or become more efficient so that, you know, we really are identifying those things that don't have a service impact as we go into fiscal 25.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions? Laura Pedro, thank you very much for the comprehensive briefing. Appreciate it. We are now in recess.